Counselor Olson.
Yeah.
Counselor Bridge. Counselor Bender is excused tonight. Counselor Stanberg. Counselor McDonald. Counselor Doyle.
Here.
Counselor Finsland.
Here.
Counselor Herrick.
Here.
Counselor McKenzie.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Nowicki.
Here.
And Counselor Sather. Item number four is approval of the minutes of the August 16th, 2011 regular council meeting.
You've heard the motion in second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 5.1 is a public hearing by the Community Development Division for the Common Council to approve the Consolidated Strategy and Plan for Housing and Community Development, 2011 through '15 program years, authorizing staff to submit plans to U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
How are we doing today? Thank you. Sorry. Did you want to see if there's any questions or...
That's correct.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Essentially, the consolidated plan is our framework for the next four or five years for our Community Development Block Ramp Program. And what it does is it lays out our priorities. A lot of them have stayed the same for the last quite a few years. If many of you recall, we did a very extensive needs assessment earlier in the year, earlier this spring. We were able to apply some of that. We also had a small committee that worked on this proposal as well. So it's been out for public comment since the end of July. We have not received any comments at all about it, which hopefully means we did either a good job or there's a little bit of apathy out there. But I think we did a very good job. We actually put this together this year with staff time. Last couple of times, we've actually hired a consultant. So it did take us a little bit of extra time, but we were able to work on it and fulfill a lot of the requirements that were needed. So with that, if I'll address any questions, Mayor, or Counselors.
Seeing a hearing none, we'll call for the public hearing. All those who wish to speak in favor of may do so now. Those that wish to speak in favor of may do so now. And for the last time, those that wish to speak in favor of may do so now. Hearing none, those that wish to speak in opposition to may do so now. Those that wish to speak in opposition may do so now. For the last time, those that wish to speak in opposition may do so now. Hearing and seeing none, we call a public hearing to a close. I ask the pleasure. Further motion in multiple seconds to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item six is the consent agenda. Also with the consent agenda, there was an amended agenda that went out. Item 6.22 was an approval to amend the premise of a Class B liquor and beer license for pudges at 2223 East Fifth Street for September 17th. And Attorney Perel is submitting a referral to the Public Safety Committee, a draft ordinance in anticipation of the Wisconsin Act 35, Conceal Carry Weapon. And Counselor McKenzie is requesting to separate item 6.6.
Further motion and approval to the consent agenda, holding out 6.6. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Counselor McKenzie?
Yeah, just at first, I just want to explain that this shows as this is being referred to the Claims Committee, but it's already gone to the Claims Committee and come back, not to the council. Mr. Farkas is here tonight, and he'd like to speak to the council, if he could do that now.
Mr. Farkas?
Thank you. Thank you all for your time. I'll keep it short and your attention here. What I want to do is bring something to the city's attention, and I want to break up into three parts. Essentially, what happened, what my actions are, both short term and long term, and what my expectations are from the city as a citizen of the city of Superior, County of Douglas. We had a storm sewer burped in our home on July 1st with resulting foul water, sewer water back up into our basement. The means of entry was our basement shower, which I have on a photo here below you. We live at Fort Bennington Road in Billings Park. The damage from this resulted in water damage to the carpet. We also had damage to our drywall and some electronic appliances and that sort of thing, primarily due to the stormwater backup from the sewer. Immediately, what we did was began to clean the area, remove the carpet, clean up the water, contracted with Service Pro to do the professional job where they did the disinfecting, that sort of thing. That was a short term. Long term, I wanted to know what happened, why did it happen, what can we do to prevent that? So we contacted the city stormwater folks. They came out the next day on Tuesday, July 5th, reviewed our sewer line from the home to the street. We contacted Counselor McKenzie. He brought out the mayor, I think Engineering Manager Roberts, Director Getzman, reviewed the damage. We put together a presentation showing some photos of the damage. We applied for the stormwater backup valve program. We went to the orientation where we learned about that program and about some of the deficiencies in the stormwater area, in the Billings Park area, relative to removing stormwater away from Billings Park. And we submitted a claim to the City Claims Liability Committee. So what we did was went through a series of actions to try to understand how to resolve this long term. My expectations are, and what I'm asking the City Council to consider, are really three things. First of all, I have some out-of-pocket costs that I'd like the City Council to address, and that amounts to $1,700. That was provided in documentation to the liability committee, as well as a quote from a local contractor to repair that damage, to bring the, put in carpet, repair the drywall, and do some painting. Secondly, I'd like the city of Superior to provide resources to expedite the stormwater backflow valves. I understand from going through the Orientation Committee that there are some constraints there. I think this is a situation that affects not only myself, but many of my neighbors in Billings Park. And one of the first steps we can do is install that stormwater backup valve. I understand that from the Orientation Committee that the stormwater folks need additional help to get these things processed and get the claims through. And finally, I'd like the city to consider, to work to remediate this entire situation that we face here at Billings Park. I'm affected. I had it happen one time. I've heard from my neighbors who've had it happen time and time again. My damages were relatively minor, but yet there are damages, and there are people who are afraid to go into their basements because of the continued sewer backup that you're experiencing. So again, what I'm asking for is that we look at my claim personally. We look at how do we resolve and expedite the implementation of the stormwater backflow valves? And thirdly, that the city work diligently to resolve this overall issue in the Billings Park area, to get the stormwater out of people's homes and into the stormwater sewer system. Any questions? Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Counselor Olson?
Sir, could you stay up at the podium, please? I see the estimated damage here at $5,400, and you stated that you're only asking for $1,700?
That is correct. The my out-of-pocket costs are $1,700, and so that is all I'm looking for.
Can I ask you what the $5,400 then was from a contractor?
Well, we got ServPro coming, we have insurance coverage as well, and had a liability limit of $5,400.
Okay.
And so what was covered was that. What was not covered is the repair work.
Okay. Is there anybody from the Sewer Department here? I guess my question is, is what are we doing when there are reoccurring incidents like
I'll turn this one off. Yeah, Counselor Olson, I can address that to some degree, since these backups have occurred in Billings Park in particular, I think July 1st, and then a few weeks later again, we had another recurrence of backups in that same area. And the ESD has gone out and done a lot of televising of the lines that are out there, and they're trying to come up with some projects that would help alleviate that by adding capacity, you know, additional pipelines or steering water to a different direction, whatever we can do there. I know in one location, we have identified an emergency project we can do there to add capacity to the pipeline. I don't believe it will address this situation. We are still looking at that one.
For the location of this, Bennington Road, is that an eight-inch sewer line?
I believe that it is, yeah.
Todd, you're nodding your head. Is it... Yeah. Is this thing getting funneled down from, say, a 20-inch or a 30-inch or something like that, and we're forcing water into an eight-inch line that has nothing else to do but divert somewhere else into people's basements? I have a hard time thinking that we should be running eight-inch sewer lines in the city of Superior.
Well, that's the old, it's actually the old combined system. I don't know when, that's the Woodstock Division one that was actually put in, 50, 60, something like that, but it was all combined. It was all eight-inch. And from there, you run from Bennington all the way out to about a block, half a block, south of 21st Street where it goes into a larger line, and that's the deficiency that they came up with. An emergency project, it goes from an eight-inch, all the eight inches come into either an eight or a 10, and then jump to like an 18, or 21, or 27. And so that line, that smaller line that picks them up is going to be replaced with a larger line. So the eights are dumping into one larger line instead of just a little bigger and then, you know, to pass that on. Bennington is far enough upstream. The majority of the solution or the help in something like this is going to be, and everybody hates the word, I'm sorry, but a little bit of ditching to divert water away from some of these inlets, because that is a combined system. You see the inlets on the corner. They're taking water off the road, off the street, out of the yards, from everywhere, and dumping it into that eight-inch line. Back when that system was put in, that was an acceptable practice, but it no longer is. So the intent of the ESD as a whole is to remove that water. Separation projects, the Billings Park project, the South Superior project, that's the intention of those. The elevation of that area is actually lower than the bottom of the pond that went into Billings Park. So there's no advantage there. So you can't send that water uphill. So the solution right now is going to be a lot of ditching, a lot of moving water away from those inlets, limiting what goes into them, restrictors in those inlets, so they're taking maybe, if you've got water sitting on the road for a half an hour or 20 minutes or something, while it's going through a three-inch restrictor into an eight-inch line, something to that effect, then you still have the same capacity as something like, you know, an eight-inch line coming from a home with a backwater valve, that type of stuff, and it should alleviate those problems. You're always going to have one once in a while come from somewhere. Something wasn't caught, something is failing somewhere. But the folks at ESD do a pretty good job of televising and cleaning and keeping track of all that stuff. And this one seemed to be kind of out of the blue. There's never been a problem there before that I've been aware of, and apparently the Thompsons, I think, a couple of houses there have had multiple problems. So that's the long answer.
Okay. My thought then is, is why are we passing on the burden to the homeowner? If the sewers were put in in the 50s and 60s, I think we could have probably done a little better job updating our sewers when we started building homes out there. I guess not anybody's fault, but it seems a little foolish to be passing the burden on to the taxpayer. And if this is hap, if it's a reoccurring problem, I've had it out in South End, two off of Cedar Avenue. And the problem I had out there was nobody wanted to come forth to the city, because they knew if they went to the liabilities claim committee, that the first thing that would be suggested was that we deny it. So I think we, if nothing else, we should look at, are the committee members, not to demean anybody on the committee, but are they aware of your long answer? I know what you're talking about, but do they? When they're making these decisions, just to deny, because it's really nobody's fault, it seems a little foolish. And if you've got a $5,400 insurance claim, and you've gone down to $1,700, and you've got damage that is clearly visible there, that may have been one of the instances that we can't control, it's still the homeowner that's paying for this damage, so.
Yeah. Todd, like you were saying, that, you know, there are deficiencies there. I think somebody had identified to me, there's several pipes in that area that end up going to one place. Now, I'm not sure what the size of that is, but it is a lifting station. And I know that that's an issue, because it sounds like to me that there's way too much volume going into that one area and that lifting station. Just so everybody knows, there was at least 10 other people that were affected by this starting in July. There was also a second one 45 days later. So some of these people, many of these people, had flooding twice in 45 days. I really appreciate the, I really do appreciate the efforts of the committees, of the Claims Committee, but I think that with all this being said here tonight, I think we have to stop saying that nothing's wrong, because something is wrong. I think what we need to do is relook, or rethink the current policy that we have, with the Claims Committee and the way that we treat our citizens when we have backups. I'm not so sure why it's always, at this point, it's the homeowner's fault just because we're hooked up to the sewer. So again, I'd like to see something looked into this, because there is a problem. We're going to have more people coming up here. If they are denied, they're going to be coming up here, maybe have some lawsuits, that sort of thing. But there is a problem, and like Dan said, you know, the homeowners can't take the brunt of this time and time again.
Counselor Brown?
Yeah, excuse me. Yeah, and I don't like to criticize either, but, you know, before we allow houses being built in areas in the city of Superior, engineering should be looking at these problems and catching this long before we allow houses to be built in these areas. And if we do build houses in these areas, and we know this is going to occur, then these homeowners should be furnished with these backup systems so they don't get the flooding. You know, and it's easy to criticize after everything is done, but I think our engineering department needs to be looking at areas where homes are going to be built and forewarn people. This is going to be a problem, and this is what you've got to do to correct it, and if we're supplying backup preventers, then we need to do that.
Jeff, the backup valves, Mr. Farkas was mentioning that it's a latent period of time before they can be provided. Is there some way, as he suggested, to expedite those?
Yeah, I guess I'm not quite sure I understand your comment in that regard. Are you just talking about the timing of the program itself and to get through it and get them installed, or...
Well, here, from the Orientation meeting we had, we have, as Counselor McKenzie indicated, there were seven or eight families who were there. I understand that there's, it all flows through one person. And there was more, one time during the Orientation Committee, there was commentary made that, please be patient, I'm only one person, I need to, you know, they'll be, they can only do so much at any one time. So that's where that comment comes from. And so my concern is, is that we've had a wet year. We've already had, not in my particular case, but in other members of the area, had two instances of this occurring. And the backflow valve is at least a device that will theoretically prevent that from occurring, at least through the, at least through the means of the sewer.
Yeah, so I guess to answer the question, yeah, typically, the program is coordinated by one person, but if he does need help, absolutely we'll do what we can to get him the help he needs, to make sure we get these people, you know, in the program and get the houses attended to.
May I ask, what are the qualifying factors that one has to have in order to qualify for the backup valve?
I actually went through the program five, six, seven years ago, something like that. So I'm quite familiar with walking in the basement and halfway between your knees and your ankles, wading through water coming out of the sewer, so. One of the requirements is, that I'm aware of, is a basement backup. You have to have, and I don't know if it's a recorded, called the sewer plant, but have had a basement backup. And then the line is televised to make sure that there is no deficiency in your line. And I believe there's a cost associated with televising that line, and then there's a small cost share to actually do the work. The interesting part, though, is each one of these is going to be different. Some people are going to have an undersized sump pump, some people are going to have some strange plumbing where something is missed, but each situation's going to be different. So that's the part that takes a little bit of time, is going down and trying to study and figure out what's actually going on here below the concrete, what's connected to what, and where everything comes out.
Counselor Olson?
So you're telling me your basement's got to flood before you can get a backwater check valve? Essentially?
Through the city program, yes. There was programs, and I don't know the history of the programs, but there was programs before where I don't think that was a requirement. There are a lot of homes that had backwater valves put in them. I don't think the program was as extensive as it is now. There was a lot more quantity of them put in, but the detailing of the entire issue wasn't done, the televising, that kind of stuff. It was just that you need a valve, dig it up, put one in. But yeah, that was one of the requirements. I'm not exactly familiar with the plumbing code, but I know that is a requirement now, that a backwater valve be installed when, you know, to answer your question about the codes and engineering, it's the state plumbing code, that a backwater valve be put in, in a new house, to prevent that. And also, a lot of the footing drains in the older houses, they dump into the same line. So any water that comes off your roof runs down your foundation, goes into your footing drains, and goes into the same line that your bathtub, your sink, everything else goes out. And so that whole line is inundated. And what I found when I was down at ESD and participating in the program is it's primarily not the, the majority of the time, it's not the city sewer that's backing up. With the slopes of yards and downspouts and roofs and driveways, everything come into the house at one time. Your lateral is, I think, a four-inch. And so you've got a four-inch line taking all of that, and you're actually the backup yourself. Your own footing drains are backing you up. Again, that's not the rule, but that's one of the situations, is that's typically the problem. So having a properly sized sump pump, a little bit of grading to get the water away from the house, that type of stuff.
Well, 30 years ago, I put about 30 of those backwater valves in for Van Dam Plumbing, and the city had a program back then that it was roughly $1,000, and it was a grant that you applied for. So, and that was basically, they were done in the north end. The elevation were, and the houses were close together, and that's a long time ago, but there really wasn't any requirement as to, your basement had to flood before you qualify. So that don't make a heck of a lot of sense to me. I got to wait for my basement to flood to get a backwater valve that's about eight bucks, so.
I have another question. Do we have a understanding of what the average cost is for installation of a backwater valve? Is it $1,000 benchmark, or...
No.
That was back 30 years ago, you said?
No, no, Mayor. I think the cost probably per household, if I remember back, is between $4,000 and $5,000 when they're all done.
Okay.
And part of it is because of what Todd said, they're separating the clear water. If you've got footing drains that come in, putting in a sump pump, you know, jackhammering through floors and replumbing some things. So it does add up in addition to just that backwater valve.
And do we in the ESD budget have a line item for these...
Yeah. We do have a line item that does cover the cost that we generally expect in a year we can service so many homes in a typical year. And I think that's part of why the flooding requirement really is so. We can have a way to start with all the applicants to the program, to prioritize for the money we have available. You know, if we had 100 applicants, and seven of them have had flooding, we would pick those seven, because they have a more severe case, and they've had a real problem at their home already, versus someone who hasn't experienced the problem yet, but may just apply and want a backwater valve.
And my understanding is we reach out to all the people that have experienced this unfortunate situation?
Right.
Just a question also for counsel consideration. If we have an area, renowned areas, where we've experienced this particular issue, would it be to our and their advantage to, being that they live in an area that has repeated events, to change the code, to allow for such installations in affected areas before the issue arises? Something to think about?
Yeah.
Dr. Vito?
I feel obliged to make some financial comments, more on the latter part of the conversation Many of you are probably already aware, we're bringing the wastewater rates back to the Finance Committee on Thursday night. And I just have to say, if we're talking $4,000 to $5,000 per home, and we're running deficits in that utility already, I guess I'll leave it at that.
Any further discussion? Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, just a question for Mr. Farkas. When you went to the Claims Committee, I noticed we get a copy basically of, just basically of the first sheet of a claim form. And on there, it says estimated damage, which you stated was $5,400, but you only asked it for $1,700. Was that $1,700 brought to the committee, or at that time, were you asking for the $5,400?
What was brought to the Claims Committee was a series of photographs, a correspondence reflecting the situation, and a quote from a local contractor for $1,700.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yeah, I guess with all this said, with all the issues that we've talked about here, about some deficiencies and things that we need to be done, possibly getting these backflow valves hooked up so this doesn't happen again, plus I hope that we're going to be able to get it fixed, where, you know, even without a backflow, we would be okay. But that is a good program. I did go to that forum that they had at the plant. It is great. I don't know, Gene's just saying now that, you know, maybe we don't have enough money to cover 100 people, but it would be nice if we could get some, because that would be great. With all that said, I think I'd like to refer this back to the Claims Committee, Mr. Farkas' case, back to the Claims Committee for consideration.
Further motion in second? Any further... Attorney Perel?
Well, I just want to point out, this isn't a subcommittee of the Common Council. This is a committee that has autonomy to act on all claims matters brought before it. So, I mean, you can certainly, you're obviously committed to at least taking a vote on the referral back to the committee. I guess the point I'm making is they're not obligated, as other subcommittees formed by the council, to take up, to retake up the matter or to re-agenda it. I'm not saying they will or they won't. Certainly drop a mention or a reference of this meeting tonight on the agenda that's next presented to the Claims Committee, but they, just so you're reminded, they do act independently and with autonomy of the council, including the notion that they, their decisions are final and are not subject to council approval or disapproval.
Well, that's, I guess that's why I think that this needs to be relooked at, but I still would want to make that motion.
Counselor Herrick?
Oh.
Oh, sorry.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Parkus.
Item 7.1, City Attorney Pearl is requesting permission to deed undeveloped residential property near Catlin Avenue and North Eighth Street back to Douglas County pursuant to reversionary clause contained in the prior deed.
For the motion, second, discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
7.2, Finance Director Vito is submitting the updated 2012 through 17 capital improvement program. And under 7.2, we have A is the Superior Youth Organization presentation regarding their funding that was held out of the CIP at the August 16th meeting.
Finance Director Vito?
Thank you, Mayor. You'll see on the agenda, item 7.3, that I'll be doing a presentation on shortly. We needed to bring back our larger budget capital improvement program, even though it was just approved not that long ago, because we were having some difficulties getting our general fund budget balanced. And one of the main funding sources of the CIP is an annual transfer from the general fund. So, we needed to look at some reductions in that transfer, and a recommendation was made from Mayor Hagan as he looked at some of the larger road projects, that the North 28th Street project would be removed, and that a less costly project, East Fifth Street, would be added in, in its place. And by doing that, we were able to probably cut about four hundred, close to five hundred thousand dollars out of the estimates. And then we had a few other changes as well. These numbers are always moving targets, it seems, and there was some additional funding needed for the animal shelter. And so we did some juggling around of some of the projects, and what you have before you highlighted in yellow are any of the numbers that have changes to them.
I'd also like to say that the 28th Street project, that particular funding, availability of funding, we may be moving that to the side streets off the Tower Avenue project. The Tower Avenue project, the DOT will not be responsible for the, let's call them laterals off of Tower Avenue from Fourteenth, Thirteenth, Twelfth, Eleventh, Tenth, down to Eighth. And that money then would be used to rebuild those side streets connecting to, for instance, the Banks Avenue project. So they would not, we would not have Tower Avenue redone and then have the first half of the block back to Banks not done. So that money would be, we're going to get it reallocated to that particular project.
So I don't know if there are any questions on that, and I'm not sure how you would like to handle 7.2A. I don't know if there's a presentation from SYO. I will say that, at this point, the CIP is balanced, so if there's any request for additional funding, it has to come out from somewhere else.
I have a question.
SYO, Mr. Olson and Mr.?
Anderson.
Mr. Ed.
Thank you, Wilbur.
Good evening and thank you. I'm Steve Olson for the new council members, and I am the president of the Superior Youth Organization that sponsors our baseball and softball programs for our youth in our community. I'd just like to thank the council and, of course, Mayor Hagan for allowing me to be here tonight, and Mary Morgan. We have developed a very strong relationship with our organization, the council, and because of Ms. Morgan being the driving force behind this, helping us get through a bunch of projects. So the next project in a priority base was the overlay of a new surface at the Hayes Court complex and stuff. In the 2012, it's my understanding that seventy-five thousand dollars has been committed for taking up the current overlay, restructuring, re-leveling, doing a bunch of work over there, and we appreciate that. And then in 2013, there would be a new blacktop overlay. What came up, I think, in question, if I remember reading the article right, and then after speaking with Mayor Hagan and Mary, that Mr. Anderson, who was one of our board members, was concerned that in the original proposal, that a lighting project of the two Cal Ripken Diamonds, which are named the Steve Arnovich and Arperano Fields, that that was not included originally in a SIP program. Looking at my records, what the SYO had done with the work of Mary and stuff is that is really kind of in a Plan Four, Phase Four, even a Phase Five of what we wanted to do. After the last SIP grant where we received three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to make improvements at our complex, at the Hayes Court complex, our next priority was to make sure that the blacktop got done. And I know that Mr. Getzman was also involved with that. So our Phase Four would really, would be coming back at some point when the, if money is available. Again, in a SIP grant, we'd be talking about our concessions building. Some of you that are on the Finance Committee, we met last October, and there's a sixty-eight thousand dollar, at that time, consideration for new water and sewer, so that we could build this new concession building, so we made sure that we had not only proper amenities there, but to enhance the complex. And the lighting project is really in the Phase Four, Phase Five project. If we ever got to that point, just an informational item for the council, Liebert Field, which is the field just south of the Babe Ruth Field, and the high school and the college softball teams use that along with our youth programs in the summer, and then the two fields previously mentioned, the Arnovich and Pirano, it would be about a hundred and five thousand dollars per field to light those and stuff. Concern was brought up, I believe, in the article about making sure that we would have conduit already to those areas, and in our last project, that was taken care of. Nancy Brown made sure that that was part of that. So there is underground boring, there is underground conduit north in the complex to take care of if we ever eventually lit the fields. So, on behalf of SYO, we are very happy that we're part of the next grant. We're looking forward to continually enhancing the Hayes Court complex. Any questions?
Counselor Olson.
So what are we actually looking at doing here? Gene said that if there was any additional monies, that they would have to come from someplace else.
One would be the consideration, Counselor Olson, Brother Olson, of the concessions building. And that we feel as an organization that infrastructure, that bringing a new water line and bringing sewer into that area of the complex, that that's infrastructure, and we feel that that would be city responsibility. What we've talked about at the August meeting in 2010, that the SYO perhaps would come to the city, and we did, we made a presentation to the Finance Committee, where we would ask you to also sign on a loan for us, and that we'd be responsible of paying back that loan from the local bank and stuff. So that was discussed. However, since that time, as we've looked at this, we continually make improvements, and will continually make improvements to the facility, however, we think that that infrastructure would be the responsibility of the city.
Okay, my concern was that if there was going to be electrical conduit that had to be put in, I had mentioned at one of the last meetings that now would be the time to do it, rather than to try and worry about after the fact, when there was a road in there, if the sewer was in there, and I believe the sewer is going, what's the street?
It's off of Elm, but it's in between E and F.
But it would be Elm Avenue?
Right.
That's where the sewer would hook up to, so?
Right.
And running directly west?
It would come west, right, so it'd come up where the new entrance into the complex on the south end was already put in, and then it would have to come up along the, be better than the south side of the Babe Ruth Field there.
So in the preliminary cost estimates, there's an electrical line item here for fourteen thousand dollars?
Yes, and I think what that is, Dan, is that that was consideration for the electrical that would go into the new building.
Okay, just to service into the concessions, Dan?
Exactly.
My question is, is where is the Babe Ruth Field, as I know it? Where is the power coming into that facility right now? Along Elm Avenue, along the back road, along the railroad right away, or where is the access to power?
Elm Avenue. Right center, let's see, can't think of the people that live there, but right center, there's a green box. It comes from the power pole on Elm Avenue, Jeff or Mary, you can correct me if I'm wrong, and it goes to a power source in a green box that's located in right center.
Transformer.
Then the transformer, and then it comes into the, what used to be the old bathrooms, little brick building on the south side there. And then the transformers, the new transformers that were put in the last time, they were put in in such a way that Musco Lighting already put in the conduit, power, I don't know what I'm missing here, but to make sure that if we ever had another project down there, that we have enough power to continue these projects. Enough capacity. Thanks, Ed.
So, with the money that is being, Mary, maybe you can help me with this, that has been approved, or is any of the blacktop removed already?
No, that's not going to be done until, I believe, August of 2012? Someplace in there?
Oh, yeah, 2012.
After your season. Yes, yep.
Okay. I see you got a bunch of in-kind donations here.
Right, the plan, that whole plan, that was our plan, that if we had to finance this ourselves, these would be the people that we would go to first. We met with Reuben Johnson, and we had a smaller committee, and they suggested that if we go along with, if the project proceeds that way, that we would talk to these other people that are listed here first, and see if there could be some in-kind donations first to lessen the cost of the project.
Okay, so are you asking that you change your priorities to get lighting first? Is that what you're looking at here, to make sure that it's in the CIP?
No, I'm not. In fact, what I'm asking is if there were money in the CIP, and I fully understand the budget constraints everybody's under, that the original plan of getting new blacktop in that complex, that was our next priority, and that's what we worked on with Mary and with Jeff. That was our next priority. The second priority would be to, as long as this is being done in 2012, this is all being ripped up and stuff, that consideration would be given then towards the 68.5 to bring in the water lines and the sewage line for the new concessions, Dan. And that the lighting project would still go out to another phase.
So, in your opinion, you're not going to be re-ripping up the blacktop? You've got power out on Elm Avenue, so, and if all you're doing is running electrical, that only has to be two feet in the ground, and you can do it with a ditch witch, and the biggest cost would be boring or drilling sonotubes in, stubbing in the conduit and having them come out the top?
Correct.
So you could put lighting in?
Eventually.
Eventually. So, I guess this is just moving on as, just the path we're on right now?
Correct.
You don't have any changes?
Correct.
But if we ran into some money, that's what you'd like to see?
That is correct. That's what we would like to see, the next, that we'd be considered for the 68.5 to put in the new water and sewer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's quite all right. Ed Anderson, on the board, but also as a citizen of Superior. My only concern, still my concern is, is getting the infrastructure into the fields. I was not aware that the wiring had been, or that the conduit had been in place to account for the Little League Fields project. As you know, the concessions building is a priority of SYO, but that also has some of the issues relating to digging, getting sewer lines in, and the electrical line into where they want to have the new concession stand. So I wanted to make sure that before we put on more impervious surface out there, which I'm not convinced is necessary, the additional blacktop overlay, but that before we place any more impervious surface out there, that all of the infrastructure work and the drainage and things have been accounted for out there. Because there are some issues with drainage, and I know there's been some mapping done of the fields, and there's some ideas about how to handle that. But I just want to make sure that any digging we do gets done before you start putting something over it. So that was the main point. And I still reiterate, and I know Steve and SYO has different priorities, but when I put this project into the CIP several years ago, lights for those Little League Fields were included, we just didn't have enough money. So I still ask if there's more money available to accomplish these things that SYO has for their priorities, I still would like to see lights on those fields. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Vito?
I think we need a motion.
Capital improvement?
We need a motion to approve that.
Is there a motion with regard to the capital improvement program?
Motion to approve.
Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
7.3, Finance Director Vito is submitting the 2012, 2013 general fund budget.
This budget comes to you after major considerable and lengthy discussions, interactions with the departments, divisions, and council members. We wanted to present it in a PowerPoint presentation to allow you the time and the view to absorb it and ask questions as we move through these particular slides. It is a balanced budget, as Finance Director Vito may have indicated prior. 2013 may be a challenge, but what we will be doing immediately in 2012 is monitoring, reviewing, and moving forward through the year, looking at 2013 for all efficiencies that we may be able to achieve, but also bring forward naturally a balanced budget as we move through 2012 for 2013. Gene?
For the benefit of our, some of our newer counselors, or returning counselors, I should say, I thought I would do just kind of a general overview of the budget and the process in the PowerPoint, and then you have a document that's got more of the details, and so feel free to ask any questions now or later on when we get into more of those details. We've been busy the last, well, Mayor, you started in April, and I think we've been looking at this budget quite a bit since you came on board, and, but the process really does go throughout the whole year, and that's, what I mean by that is when you as counselors get calls from constituents, or the mayor gets calls about certain issues, we try to keep those in mind as we look at what we're going to be doing with the next year's budget. And so at this point in time, it's early September, and what you have before you is what's called the mayor's executive budget, and this is for the- what's called the mayor's executive budget, and this is for the city's general fund. We do two-year budgets, and you just got done approving the capital improvement program. Now we're looking at more of the day-to-day operating costs for our major departments like police, fire, public works, and, and some of the smaller divisions like mine and Terry's Frogs, et cetera. So at this point, you can actually approve this budget tonight if you wish. If you don't feel comfortable with it after we have questions, answers, discussions, we do have September 20th, that we could still have more discussion at that time if needed, but just want to let you know that we do have a timeline here, and we have a number of other budgets that will be coming forward at council meetings pretty steady through the rest of the year. So statutorily and by our ordinance, we have to, the mayor has to introduce something by September 1st of each year. And so we did an initial introduction midway through August, and here we are for the first review and discussion with you as counselors. Again, we can have another meeting if need be, and then we have very strict timelines as far as statutory, when we do notices, when we hold a public hearing, and when we bring forward our actual levy for approval from the council. Statutory deadlines of when we get the tax roll to Douglas County, et cetera, et cetera, and then we always, unfortunately, tax bills get printed right before Christmas, and that's when, that's when they go out. Revenue drives everything that we do, and this is very, this presentation is very similar to what I did two years ago, and we were starting to feel the effects of the, the economy on ourselves locally, so we're affected both, both on, by the national, what things are, things that are happening on the national and the local level. Our interest earnings on investments continue to unfortunately go down. Building permits, there's not a lot of activity we're seeing in residential development. And most notably, actions that happened during the year 2011 with the state, that their effects on us locally have been very large. And I kept the last bullet point on their local taxing decisions, that isn't, we don't have near as much say in that as we did in previous years, and what that means is, in the past, the mayor could set direction on what percentage of, of an increase in the levy that, that he or she thought would be appropriate, and normally it had been around 2%. We don't have that choice this year. We have levy limits, and if anything, we may be able to increase the levy by about 0.5% for some anticipated growth factors. Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, just a question related to what you just, just said. So what, what exactly does that carry forward adjustment? How does that work, and where does that come from?
Well, it's, it gets a little confusing. There is some talk about carrying forward unused levy limits, but I know when I've gone through all the explanations, it comes to a maximum of 0.5% that's allowable. I think we will get that, but that, that gives us about fifty-six thousand dollars. So it's not much, but it is incorporated in this budget.
Okay, thank you.
Limits and mandates. The, the limits and mandates used to only affect the expenditure side of our budget with the expenditure restraint program, and what that meant was that the state would continue giving us roughly four hundred fifty to five hundred thousand dollars of funding if we kept our budget at basically an inflationary, Consumer Price Index inflationary level or less. All of the last nineteen years since I've been here, we have done that. In fact, I think on average, we've been significantly below inflation, more like an average of about 1.7, 1.8% over many, many years as far as the increase in our budgets. We now have limits on the, on the revenue side as well, the levy limits that I, that I just mentioned, and the levy limits are in effect for the years 2012, 2013, I believe the way legislation is right now, that they will continue until changed. Certainly, the effects of Wisconsin Acts 10 and 32 have had effects on the expenditure side of our budget, and I'll touch on that a little bit later. This chart shows our total revenue, the red, the red bars, the, the bottom color, the light blue, is shared revenue funding. And you can obviously see, I have another slide in, in a moment that will show, show you better what has happened to that particular source of funding. But in essence, what this shows is that shared revenue is a significant source of funding for our budgets. It isn't keeping up with inflation, in fact, it's being cut, and in the year 2004, and again, anticipated for 2012, there's some pretty significant cuts. This is just another way of looking pie charts, comparing 1999 and, and where we are for 2012. And when I look at this, it doesn't look really all that different, but the percentages, you can see the black section of the pie, that's our shared revenue. It has gone down from 37% of our budget down to 29%, and so that puts more pressure on our other funding sources. Property taxes now make up 46% of our budget versus 42 before. And you can see the challenge, when, when you have levy limits, you can't, you can't increase that property tax portion of the pie, so we, we do have some challenges. I think this better shows what's happened to state shared revenue, and it was clipping along at a pretty nice pace back in the early 2000s. 2004 was our first cut of either four or 500,000. Stayed pretty steady there. We took another cut in 2010 and a larger cut in 2012. I think, I think quite frankly, when I heard the cut that we were getting for 2012, I was actually a little bit relieved that it wasn't as much as it, some of the other communities, some other communities were seeing cuts of, I think, 9% was the average. Ours, ours was around 4.5% when all the calculations were done, but that does represent close to a $400,000 reduction in our revenue. On the expenditure side of the budget, things continue to just move in, in certain directions. We, we continue to, even though our revenue is flat, we continue to have inflation with the exception of maybe a couple of years ago, we actually had deflation. And I believe for the most part, staffing levels are fairly similar to the current 2010, 2011 budget, and I do have that outlined in the, the document that has more details some of the, some of the changes that have happened in, in staffing levels. Service levels, as far as I know, are the same service levels that we've been providing. Contract settlements definitely have an effect on, on the expenditure side of our budget, and I can say we do not have any salary increases included in this budget for 2012 to 2013. Some of the, some of our contracts are already settled. The two AFME clerical, technical, and public works are settled through the end of 2013, and, and again, we'll get into a little bit more of some of the specifics of that later on. Health insurance, where we did hold rates at the same level for 2011, we're not able to hold those steady for 2012, so I believe that's a 10% increase anticipated there. Fuel prices, even though we have our own fueling system, the prices still go up, and the issuance of debt will always affect our expenditure budget, but what we've been doing is making sure that the, the new debt that we're issuing, it keeps us in a reasonable percentage of our budget for paying that back annually. Counselor?
The health insurance, the, the pre-amendment itself, or the, the insurance policy itself grew?
The, the insurance policy is the exact same policy, and the claims for our self-insured fund have gone up, and so we have to raise the premiums to cover the higher claims.
Okay, where does the public employees making the contributions to their health plan fall into that?
That, that helps tremendously. The, even though the Act, and I don't remember if it was Act 10 or 32, that specified the Wisconsin Retirement System contributions, there was also the component for health insurance, and that was a requirement if you were, if a local municipality was a part of the state insurance plan. We are not, however, that was included in negotiations. The two AFME unions did agree that they would go to the 12.6% contribution, which was the same as what the state was requiring. So those contribution rates will start on January 1st, Kami? Yeah, January 1st. So previously, they may have been paying 5% or 10%, I don't recall if there were any that were at zero. Okay, so yeah, they'll move from 5 or 10 up to 12.6, and that probably, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but if I, if I said it saved us $100,000, it would probably be accurate or more. Another way of looking at our budget, the expenditure budget, this graph is actually, if we, if we were to back up, it would be the same graph as revenue, because our revenue and our expenditures always balance, we always have a balanced budget. And again, increasing at a rate of about 1.8% per year, actually decreasing in 2012 with a very slight increase in 2013. This graph shows the, what we touched on earlier, the annual contribution from the general fund to the capital improvement program. And our first CIP started in 1996, and back when revenue, the revenue picture was a little better, we had more ability to shift money, transfer money from our general fund to this CIP. You can kind of see when I mentioned that in 2004, we had our first shared revenue cut, a good portion of balancing that came from cutting our capital program. And we, it was kept pretty steady at just about 1.2 million per year through this year, and that is increasing in 2012 and 2013, and I, I believe, Mayor, you have some comments you'd like to say?
This graph, and the one before, the total expenditure by budgets from 2000, or 99 and 2013, kind of says it all as far as I'm concerned. While expenditures kept rising dramatically, oh, from 99 to 2011, the capital improvement program took almost a reverse cut, if you will, so rather than putting monies back into our assets, we decreased that dramatically. So the, the history of transfers for capital improvement, this is a piece of good news in, in our budget that we're now reinvesting in our, in our assets in the community, so that trajectory hopefully will go back up as we move forward as much as we can. Just, it just seemed to be very glaring to me.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, I'm just about at the end of, of the PowerPoint here, and wanted to share some of my concerns as the Finance Director, and I've pretty much mentioned all of these until we start seeing some increases in some of these revenue sources. I don't know why the budget of 2014 and 15 will be any different. In fact, I think it will be a lot, a lot more challenging to, to balance than the, the upcoming two years. We also, this, and the reason I say that is I sat down kind of towards the end of the budget process with Public Works Director Getzmann, and we were trying to find, I don't know if it's $5,000 here, $10,000 there, and we just kind of scrounged around, and it was really, really difficult. I, I don't think either one of us had any more suggestions on where, where it could come from without starting to look at service levels, so that's, that's very, very concerning. But hopefully, things will pick up in the economy, and that will help us. I'll open it up for questions, if there's any questions about, that's just kind of the general overview we have in, in the document that I, I sent out. It has a lot more details about any changes from our current two-year budget to the upcoming two-year budget, and so I, there's extra copies on the table. I would, I guess I would just open it up at this point to see if counselors have any And if not, would you like me to continue on? Okay. The, the document that you have, it has, the narrative has the summary of what, what I think are the major, major changes in this budget, and, and you're very well aware, a change in the ordinance for how the oil pipeline terminal tax money will be changed from paying down debt early to putting that towards infrastructure and the capital improvement program. There's, there's an item here, the next item is reinstatement of the annual funding of $10,000 for Douglas County Historical Society. That is actually still in process at the Finance Committee and under discussion, so if, if things change at the Finance Committee, we can readily change that in, in the general fund budget. Government Affairs Director Department was removed from the budget, and some additional funding for a business economic development consultant has been added into the Economic Development Fund, which will be coming your direction within the next couple of months, that budget. I believe the grant writer position is in process, that Kami may be working on taking applications for that. Mayor wanted to reinstate a hiring freeze on all open positions and making sure that they're thoroughly reviewed before any approval is given to rehiring. And then we have a change in our animal shelter funding with the discussions we've been having with animal allies, and hopefully the new facility that we'll be building next spring, we'll be working on a management contract for that facility, and so we'll need to put some more money in that direction. I'm not going to go through all the revenue estimates, but I can just say in general, we have a lot of reductions in our state funding sources. Pretty much every one was reduced, the biggest one was shared revenue, but we have general transportation rates that were reduced, mass transit funding for the state's share of the DTA coming into Superior, that was reduced. And kind of the same thing that I said last time, investment revenue is down, and building permit revenue, which usually is pretty significant, is, is down as well. So when all, all of that is said and done, the budget is decreasing in 2012 by 2.3%, and it increases by 0.2% in 2013, so decrease or very flat. Any, would you like any more updates on the Wisconsin Retirement System contributions or health insurance, how that has played out in the budget? Again, we still do have two contracts that are in current, in current negotiation, so we're not, not totally done yet. I guess that's all I have. And again, if you want to approve it tonight, that's wonderful, if you feel comfortable with the information, it is a balanced budget. There's no problem if you want to hold off until September 20th, so whatever your pleasure is.
Motion to approve. Second. Further motion, the second to approve, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item 7.4, Planning Director Circa's requesting approval of a facility use agreement with Dennis Gorman for a small section of property located on the southerly end of the Towers flip.
You've heard the motion, the second, discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Please, excuse me, Police Chief Peters is requesting authorization to enter into an agreement with Division Solutions LLC to start a driver's diversion program.
Heard the motion, the second. Heard the motion, a second, discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
7.6, Police Chief Peters, Police Chief Peters is requesting approval to accept a grant of $499,852 under the 2011 COPS Child Sexual Predator Program.
I'd like to make a comment here, and Assistant Chief Leges may want to chime in here. This particular grant is something we should pay high respect to for obtaining by the police department. This particular grant, Lord, we beat out the State of Wisconsin Department of Justice for this particular opportunity, as well as many other applicants across the nation. I think, was there 20 of them awarded? Chuck?
Right. There were 156 agencies, I believe, who are nominated by the U.S. Attorneys to be able to apply for this grant. 105 applications were submitted properly, and just 20 applications were approved by the COPS office. Captain Shadler-Laura was primarily the writer of this grant. His application is posted on the COPS site as the example to other agencies who wish to apply for the grant. Here's a successful one, learn from it. I have to give him a lot of credit for that. I also want to give Sergeant Mick Alexander a lot of credit with his talents and commitment to the office. Our office has grown from Sergeant Alexander working on computers while he was working the night shift as a patrol sergeant, to now he's the task force commander in a task force office which has been recognized nationally as a model. He's here tonight to answer any specific questions, and perhaps to give you an overview of the work that's being done in the office and what we'll gain with this grant.
Sergeant Alexander?
Mayor, Counsel. I guess it's an honor to receive that grant, I mean, beating out a large state agency, and most of the other agencies that we competed against were significantly larger. I mean, we were up against cities like Chicago, and New Yorks, and Los Angeleses, and things like that. I guess, I think, probably the main reason we received that, one was, we've demonstrated over the past probably five or six years, an ability to adapt, to address, and investigate these cases, and bring successful prosecutions, and a benefit to our communities in removing some dangerous people. But secondly, more importantly, the cost side of things is, our approach has been a little more innovative. We've partnered with Minnesota agencies. Our jurisdictional area, as far as our task force is concerned, is probably more representative by the 7th and 8th Congressional Districts from northern Minnesota and Wisconsin. And we provide forensic computer services, Internet Crimes Against Children services to that much larger area, a much greater population base, but focusing in, obviously, on the problems in our community here. By doing that, it's expensive work. The equipment that we use, the training that we need, the investigations that we do are very time-consuming, require many man-hours. And by regionalizing that, in providing services for a large area, instead of all these small agencies trying to dedicate funds and training dollars and manpower hours to these investigations, we can kind of be a regional hub and work these cases and provide that service to that larger service area. And I think that model, combined with the successes that we've had over the past few years, has been a big benefit of it. What this $100,000 means for us today is, one, continuing what we're doing now. We went from basically a one-person operation back in 2007 to now, we'll have five full-time members operating out of this task force, combined from members of the Duluth Police Department, St. Louis County Sheriff's Department, Douglas County Sheriff's Office, and the Superior Police Department. In 2007, we worked probably approximately 50 cases. In 2011 alone, we've worked 84 cases and processed 145 pieces of digital evidence. A majority of those are coming from the city of Superior, yet we are helping other agencies in and around the Duluth and Superior area. But I mean, I think it's naive for people to think that these problems are only big city problems. I mean, you've probably seen headlines of recent cases. I mean, we do have dangerous people living here. We do have dangerous people who can be in contact with our children, and this grant is going to provide us the funding to maintain the manpower hours, or increase them in this case by allowing more of our detectives to work full-time instead of being general investigations on this work. It assists in the funding of the positions for the St. Louis County Sheriff's Office and the Duluth, Minnesota Police Department. And then a big portion of it covers our equipment expenditures, our software maintenance to be able to collect the evidence that we do, the training that we spend to get the investigators competent and proficient in these investigations, and ultimately, some overtime money to help offset the costs, because again, these are time-consuming investigations. And once we become involved in a case and the criminal proceedings begin, we do run on a tight timeframe as far as being able to prepare a product for the courts. And sometimes that does require overtime. So I think it's a win-win for multiple communities, not just us, and a nice recognition for the work that we've accomplished over the past four or five years.
I just want, I was going to jump the gun, Chuck, and congratulate you again, because we've been accustomed to doing that for the last few years, but congratulations to all you folks.
I also want to congratulate you and thank you for the great job you're doing. Heard the motion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 7.7, Public Director, Public Works Director Getzmann is recommending to award the 2011 concrete masonry bid to Hovland Concrete Masonry for $147,095.
All in favor? Opposed? Carried.
7.8, he is also recommending to award the 2011 asphalt milling bid to WK Construction for $33,903.52.
Heard the motion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Carried.
Public Works Director Getzmann is also recommending to waive the bid requirements to purchase one 2011 heel half-pack front-load refuse 28-yard Packer from McQueen Equipment for $106,151, available through landfill CIP funds.
Counselor Herrick.
Yeah, Jeff, didn't we just replace one of these last year, or the year before?
Counselor, we did some regular, the regular flip-up for the residential carts, those packer bodies. This is the one packer body we have. It's a front loader, picks up the dumpsters you see around town, those rectangular dumpsters. We've actually talked about this for probably a year or a year and a half, we identified the need to replace it, but held off for a little while to get some additional use of life out of that body. And it's pretty well at the end of its life right now, it's rested through and having some real issues. And this is just looking at replacing that packer body on existing chassis. So we keep the engine and chassis and put a new body on it.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor McKenzie.
Jeff, waiving the bid requirements has to do with this Minnesota state contract. Can you explain that a little bit?
This contract, Wisconsin has something like this, and as does Minnesota, for varying pieces of equipment, whether it's trucks, automobiles, or sweepers and things, we buy the same way. The state government will take bid prices from varying suppliers on a large number of pieces of equipment, and secure a really good price for those pieces of equipment. They'll hold that order window open a certain amount of time, and then allow us to participate and use their bid price to buy the same equipment. So they've already done the bidding work for us, rather than us go out to the open market and bid, put an ad in the paper and online someplace, and solicit bids. They've already done that work, gotten a good price for a large number of units, and we can take advantage of that.
It is a pleasure. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 7.10, Parks and Recreation Administrator Morgan is requesting to award the contract to supply Victorian-style gazebo for the Billings Park to Rees Recreation Products for $68,139.
Heard the motion, a second, any discussion? Counselor McKenzie.
Mary, just wondering, with the bid, with that gazebo, does that include electrical? Is it wired? Will it be wired?
What you're being invited to approve as a purchase this evening is essentially a kit. The gazebo will arrive in two million pieces, and our very talented construction and maintenance crew will put it together. We will also be obligated to pour a 50-foot diameter slab, but the gazebo is fitted, Counselor, for conduit.
Okay.
That will go, and plug-ins. So it's fitted for that, but we'll actually have to hire an electrician to set it up and reestablish power and some of that kind of stuff.
Okay.
So I think the short answer was yes.
Yeah. Because I think it said somewhere in there that it's going to be used for, possibly for weddings and bands and...
Oh, to be sure, this feature in Billings Park will be the signature feature at the site once it's installed, because it's a 46-foot diameter Victorian period-looking style gazebo.
Beautiful. Thanks.
Counselor Olson.
Shows you that the budget source, the funding for the concrete, is coming from the CIP.
The funding for the kit, the concrete, the electrical, whatever we need to do, Counselors, coming from the CIP. The 2011 CIP.
So the whole thing, the whole gazebo.
You've heard the motion? We heard the discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 8 is business by the mayor. The mayor has a few words.
I just want to bring to your attention, and I'm going to ask Jeff to speak to this. We had a meeting today with Donahue and Associates, and they brought us this particular picture, if you will. I asked Counselor Stenberg to pass around the plaque. We have been awarded, along with Donahue, an engineering award with regard to facility planning for permitting processes, and I'll let the director explain that.
Yeah, Counselors, this came to us in light of one of the projects that you've probably heard about, the PHUV project that we've got at the plant. Part of that, the PH portion is something to address the ammonia limits that we have in our treatment permit. And that project, we've been working with Donahue, as Mayor Hagan said, for the past couple of years on engineering that. And what Donahue did in terms of the cost on that project, they started looking at ways to address the ammonia issue, and estimate there would be a $30 million project roughly to do that at our plant, in terms of changing the capacity and the setup to operate the plant. And by the time they were done working between our folks at the ESD and the DNR regulators to get a permit requirement that we could better meet, they reduced the construction cost to something that you've been hearing about, to the range of $1.5 million to $2.5 combined project, and reduced our potential annual operating budget by about $300,000 when we installed that project. So at the American Council of Engineering Companies, the Wisconsin chapter, Donahue turned this project in, nominated it for an award, and this project for the city of Superior won. So that's what you see here today. There's a synopsis of the project on the board, and I'll be happy to pass this around if you didn't get a chance to see it. But it was very nice to see, and great job by our staff and our consultant on that.
Thank you very much.
Item 10.1 is a preliminary resolution introduced by the Public Works Department declaring the intent to exercise special assessment powers under Wisconsin statutes to blacktop the alley between 6th and 7th Avenues East and East 5th Street and the railroad tracks.
Heard the motion, a second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 11.1 is an ordinance introduced by the city clerk relating to the final wards in Aldermanic districts.
You've heard the motion, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Item 11.2 is an ordinance introduced by the Public Works Department amending the traffic code, disabled parking zones by adding 1520 Ogden Avenue.
You've heard the motion, a second, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carried, approved.
Item 12.1, Eric Silgendel, on behalf of the Superior Young Professionals, requesting to make a brief presentation on their newly formed organization. Is Eric here?
We'll carry that over to the next meeting and re-invite him. Heard the motion. Mr. Danny John.